If everyone could start taking their seats, we will shortly call this meeting to order. It is 8:33 a.m. on this May 7th day. Welcome to San Angelo City Council Meeting. As usual, we will start with our Chaplain Prayer and Pledges. And of course, today, we have Chaplains Gary and Marcella Jenkins to lead us in both.
Good morning, everybody. Will you join with us in a word of prayer? Precious Father in heaven, in the name of Jesus, we bow before you to say thank you for another day that you've made. We thank you for this opportunity to come together to conduct the business of the city. We ask you to endow the members of the City Council and our mayor, Lord, with wisdom and the understanding to do that which is pleasing in thy sight and to conduct this business in a way that glorifies you. We thank you for every council member. We thank you for the clerk and the assistant clerk and our corporation council and all of the officers of the city government. We ask you to bless our first responders, both at the fire department and the City of San Angelo Police Department. We thank you, dear Lord, for all of the citizens that are here today, and we ask you to bless them. And we pray that this meeting today will be one that will glorify you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. We have three proclamations today, and the first one is going to be National Trauma Survivors Day. Do I have people in the audience to receive this proclamation? Would you please come forward? How are you? Good. Good morning. Trauma survivors demonstrate unwavering courage, resilience, and perseverance in the face of adversity, inspiring us all with their strength and determination. Their journeys of recovery serve as powerful reminders of the human spirit's capacity to endure and overcome even the most challenging circumstances. The support and compassion shown to trauma survivors by their families, friends, healthcare providers, and communities play a crucial role in their healing process by fostering hope and renewal. Through recognizing the importance of raising awareness regarding the physical, emotional, and psychological impact of trauma, the need for continued research, education, and advocacy is emphasized while improving trauma care and support services. On this day, we honor the resilience of trauma survivors and express our profound gratitude to all those who contribute to their recovery and well-being. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim May 15, 2024, as National Trauma Survivors Day and call upon all citizens, organizations, and communities to join in honoring the strength of trauma survivors and to promote awareness, understanding, and support for those affected by trauma.
Would you like to speak?
Yes.
Hello there. My name is Hannah Corbus. I'm the Trauma Survivors Network Coordinator at Shannon Medical Center. And I just want to thank the council for taking time out of this meeting to honor our trauma survivors and to recognize National Trauma Survivors Day. It's a very beautiful cause for something that's really important and close to my heart. So I just want to invite all of you to our event on May 15 from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Shannon Medical Center Con Course. We'll just have some information about the Trauma Survivors Network and the resources that we offer, and we'll have an opportunity to honor our trauma patients. Thank you, guys, very much.
Next is our Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, and I know we have people in the audience for this, so please come forward. Good morning, girl. How are you? Glad to have you here. Good morning, dear. Hi, Hannah. Good to have you here. Good morning. Unfortunately, as we meet here today, I know that since we've last been here, we've had a motorcycle death in our community. So it's really important today that we understand about our motorcycle safety awareness. Thank you all for being here. Ponderosa MC, as members of the Texas Confederation of Clubs and Independent Riders in collaboration and support of the National Safety Council, Tech dot, and local motorcycle enthusiasts, we would like to remind all road users that the month of May marks a national recognition of Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Motors are reminded of the frequency of higher seasonal returns of motorcycle enthusiasts to Texas roadways during this month. Due to their smaller size, motorcycles may easily be overlooked in regular traffic flow. Motorists are encouraged to always be aware of motorcycles on all roadways when approaching intersections, when performing lane changes, as well as whenever motorists near or pass other vehicles, including motorcycles. Motorcyclists are encouraged to operate their motorcycles in a defensive manner and within the rules of the road. Motorcyclists ask that as motorists drive, they take a few extra seconds to look twice for motorcycles, both during Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month and throughout the year to promote overall safety. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in San Angelo, Texas, and encourage everyone to share the road safely. Who's going to speak?
I got you.
And would you?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and all present and watching today. I'm Gypsy Sedan, and on behalf of the motorcyclists in our community and all across the country, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to share with you one of the most important days we look forward to each year in the hope that it will help to save a life. Today's recognition and proclamation joins the national recognition across the U.S. of May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. For several years now, I've had the honor and privilege to stand before this forum and remind our local community that those of us who choose to ride motorcycles are just like everyone else, and that we all wish to return home safely from any destination, whether riding to work, school, appointments, errands, trips, or to and from wherever. Our greatest desire is to remain safe. We are all daughters, sons, mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, grandmothers, grandfathers, aunts, uncles, family and friends of others who care for and worry about us, and we all hope for the same as you, to make it safely back to our families and homes at the end of our ride. While such a consideration for those who choose to drive a four-wheeled vehicle or larger often take this idea for granted, we, as motorcyclists, cannot. We all consider ourselves brothers and sisters of the roads and hold each other in such regard because we have watched and witnessed so many of us injured or even lose lives every year due to senseless and preventable actions that could have easily been avoided. If only everyone could take a few extra moments to look twice for motorcycles. This is why we take this time to remind everyone to imagine your family members or friends standing here in place for just a moment. And then the next time you get into your vehicles, please remind yourself and others to take those few extra seconds upon your driving journey to be aware that there is a life riding on every motorcycle on the road, and each life is surely loved by others, just as you are loved and are loved by your family and friends. So again, we, as motorcyclists, ask you to please look twice for motorcycles, particularly at intersections, when changing lanes, and before turning, because it could mean the difference between life and death for a motorcyclist. Thank you.
Our last proclamation is Historic Preservation Month. Please come forward, everyone, for this proclamation. You're good. Downtown San Angelo Inc. recognizes the significance of our city's rich history and the importance of preserving our cherished historic sites, buildings, and landmarks. May is nationally recognized as Historic Preservation Month, a time dedicated to celebrating and raising awareness about the value of preserving our cultural heritage for present and future generations. Historic Preservation Month serves as an opportunity to honor the efforts of individuals, organizations, and communities who work tirelessly to safeguard the tangible reminders of our past, which fosters a deeper appreciation for our collective history. Downtown San Angelo Inc. acknowledges that historic preservation contributes to the economic vitality, cultural identity, and sense of place within our community by attracting visitors, promoting civic pride, and enhancing property values. By preserving our historic resources, we ensure that the stories of those who came before us are not lost but rather serve as a source of inspiration, education, and connection for future generations. Downtown San Angelo Inc. recognizes the importance of collaborative efforts among government agencies, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and citizens to protect and promote our historic assets. We urge our community members to engage in activities such as heritage tours, preservation workshops, and volunteer opportunities to actively participate in the preservation of our built environment. Let us reaffirm our commitment to preserving the unique character and heritage of Downtown San Angelo, ensuring that it remains a vibrant and thriving place for generations to come. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Historic Preservation Month and encourage all residents to join us in celebrating the diverse history of our city and enduring the legacy of its historic places.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I would like to begin by introducing Downtown San Angelo's new assistant, Destiny Hasso. She's here with us today. And I'd also like to express thanks to Shang. He is an Angelo State University student who completed his internship with us, and he also helped us write this proclamation. And then thank you to Sherri Bailey as well at the City of San Angelo. She's a Historic Preservation Officer. Thank you for being here today with us. And I also want to give a little plug about San Angelo Gives. That is today's online giving day. Downtown San Angelo is a nonprofit organization, so when you think of giving your contributions today, please think of us. In San Angelo, there are 70 properties, buildings, and homes that are listed on the National Historic Registry. Thirty-nine of those are within our historic district, and that's not to mention those that are not listed. Why is historic preservation so important to us? Well, it helps us understand and really appreciate our cultural heritage. They're historic areas that create vibrant cultural destinations that bring in art and events and festivities, and in return, it brings in investment, revenue, and economic growth. Historic tourism and heritage tourism really is an economic driver. Just think about other cities who do preserve their cultural heritage, like Bastrop and Nacogdoches. And of course, we're all familiar with Fredericksburg. Now, think about San Angelo. Take a walk or a drive next time you're driving through downtown and take a look at our historic properties, at our cultural heritage, the ornate detail in the architecture, the beauty that we have here in San Angelo that needs to be preserved. And the way that we can preserve it is by restoration, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of these properties. Please take pride, and please take care of our cultural heritage. Thank you.
We want to remind everybody at 4:30 today, there will be a ribbon cutting to celebrate Art in Uncommon Places, a million-dollar investment in art projects in historic downtown, and that's at 4:30 at 129 South Chadburn. We will now open up the meeting for public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the deus, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Those wanting to make public comment, please come forward.
I'm going to adjust my picture before I start. I think I am. Is it moving? I can't get it. What button do I push to move it? That's the only... I should have ten pictures. Arrow? There it goes. Oh, thank you. That's the one on... Button. My button's not working. Thank you. Trauma, elder abuse, and financial exploitation, which has been occurring to me now for three years and eight months in this city and this county, and continues to date. It took my husband's life. In the past three weeks, I've been threatened with death four times. I've been told to move. I've been told, I'm surprised I'm not dead at my age, and that when I please shut up. I've been told by the sheriff and told out of three public meetings and told to shut up. We have a problem in this community. I'm going to read my husband's obituary, who I got back from Johnson's Funeral Home, dead. They wanted to bury him without even calling me, weighing 85 pounds, having no legs and no brain, and had been starved to death and kept captive from me for 14 months. Dennis Alfred... He was never given the privilege of this because he had to lay in the freezer for four months before I finally got him back and complacent at our ranch where he was supposed to have been. Dennis Alfred Robison of Knickerbocker, Texas, a brilliant, loving, creative man, passed away on December 10, 2021, our 27th wedding anniversary, in Shannon Hospital without me. Dennis was born in San Angelo, Texas, to Bill Robison and Aubrey Lee Robison Sanders. On October 30, 1946, he attended Angelo State University and later on went to own his own business, Consolidated Contractors. During his career here as a general contractor spanning over 40 years, Dennis built hundreds of buildings in San Angelo and the surrounding communities. Some of the most notable projects are the Rio Concho Sports Complex, Texas Bank, the Porter Henderson Library, 20 other buildings on Angelo State University, restorations to the Fort Concho and Railroad Depot, the Paseo and the Celebration Bridge, the Texas Workforce Commission, MHMR, the gymnasiums on every SAID campus in this town, the Lee Wright Dental Office Building, which won national awards, Ranchers Lamb, Kirby Park, Cristoval Middle School, Homeland Security, along with FBI office, along with hundreds of other projects before closing our business in '18 due to Dennis's dementia and other medical issues with me. After 45 years of dedicated service to our community, the last project we completed together was the renovation of the cathedral at the Sacred Heart Church here in this town. Dennis and I's legacy will continue throughout history with the projects we've completed. I'm handing over to you this, and I'm having you look at these pictures. This is our lovely Westlake Hardware bathroom facility, to which I was told I would just live with and not shop there.
Thank you for being here today, Jackie. Further public comment? If so, please come forward. Yes?
I just wanted to make a comment.
Sure.
I wanted to thank the City of San Angelo staff for going out there and cleaning up the tent city that they're starting to do out there. Bob took me for a little tour of it yesterday, so they're really hard at work, and I just want to say thank you very much. That is one hard job to do.
Daniel, do you want to make any comments concerning the work and the efforts that went on yesterday and I suspect going on today?
Yes, ma'am. The cleaning will continue probably for the next couple of days. We have been working with the Homeless Coalition. I know we've had calls and questions about the homeless individuals. The city has been working with the Homeless Coalition to have a piece of property where they could be relocated, and that's being worked through. But right now, we have responded. I know that there were several concerns that we had received from business owners and residential owners there near that area. We have... We're doing everything we can to make sure that everything in that whole area is cleaned up. And again, looking at the future, ensuring that the work continues with the Homeless Coalition and that the issues with the homeless continue to be addressed.
Thank you. Further public comment? Come on forward. Come forward.
Mayor Gunter and City Council Members, my name is Michael McDonald. I live at 2618 Sleepy Hollow Road, which is leased property from the city. I've resided at that area for 35 years now. Transferred here from Odessa, Texas, in a law enforcement agency, I was sent here to open an enforcement office. Very unexpectedly, found a home on the lake, which I purchased in 1989. When I purchased the home, I was given a 30-year lease, of which I paid, I think it was $480 a year at that time. The property did go up for sale. Unfortunately, at the time, I was starting a brand-new business and could not afford that... what they were asking. In hindsight, I wish I would have bought it. In hindsight, I wish I would have invested in Microsoft. But fact of the matter is, my lease ran out. And although I continually thought about buying the property, I thought, I'm going to be in my 70s when this lease runs out. Well, here I am. The lease has run out. The city decided, after some debate, to continue my lease on a year-to-year schedule. My first year, and again, I was paying $480, which I know is ridiculously low, and I appreciated that. My first year, $2,428 a year. Second year, $4,856 a year. From that point, the third year, the lease fee went up to $7,284 a year. As I'm now retired, living on a fixed income, it would take over half of my monthly income to be set aside to live in a home that I paid off over 15 years ago. I love the home. I've done so much improvement. Last year, I put the home on the market, and it did not sell when I thought it would. My new lease came up, so I paid the $7,284, took it off the market to live there another year, and then put it back on the market. That property went, in five years, it's... The value of the property went from $110,000. Two years later, it went to $200,000. Put my home back on the market this year for the same price I had put it on last year, only to find the appraisal for $200,000 was no longer in effect because it was 14 months prior. The property went up $39,000 in just over a year. I'm priced out of the market. What I sell that home for is what I'm going to live, my wife and I, for the rest of our lives. Over half of what I'm selling the house for has to come to the city. I'm disputing the amount of the recent appraisal.
Hank, you need to go to Tom Green County Appraisal District. That's who men... You will need to go to the Tom Green County Appraisal District. That's who manages the appraisals, not the city.
We're also working with him, I believe, on this particular issue regarding the appraisal, and we'll continue to do so till we get resolution.
The...
But that's on the land, not the house.
Yes.
On the land. My house has not gone up in value, although it's totally remodeled. And I'm told it's just absolutely beautiful from people that look on it online.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further public comment?
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Cassie Harper. I am his Realtor. So I just wanted to kind of tell you some facts about the leased lake properties on Lake Nazworthy. So I kind of checked into why leases are going up so fast. Like in 2019, his appraisal, just to purchase the lot from the city, it doesn't value the house at all. It's just the raw land value. His appraisal was $121. Today, he just got it, like last week, a new appraisal, paid $900 to get a new appraisal, and it's $239,000. So it's doubled since 2019. Well, the value of houses has doubled. But what we're not looking at is that if you had, like, a leased lot, it was vacant, and you owned a lot out there, right? And you wanted to sell the lease to somebody else, would you just give it away? You wouldn't, because you're kind of selling the rights to that lease as well, right? So the city's not factoring in that portion of it. And then also, I wanted to talk about... Let me get my note out real quick. Sorry. I wanted to talk about the possibility of maybe putting, like, a cap, like, on homesteaded properties. Maybe we can put on the agenda that, like, maybe we don't increase the value of the appraisal over, like, 10%, because that's what the county does with our property tax appraisals, right? If it's homesteaded, they don't increase the value 10% year after year. So I was thinking, maybe we could look at maybe doing something like that for these home property owners. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
More public comment? Good morning.
Tont Yeezy, District Five. I drove all night to get here. I was in Oklahoma yesterday, and so I'm tired. I'm just going to read.
So hopefully you missed all the tornadoes.
That's why we went. I have a son who likes to chase, and it was his birthday, and we go, I go with him then, I go with him other times, but that's why we went and did chase. I think there were too many prayers for tornadoes to happen. I think that's what happened, so it was a good thing. All right. We talked about all the improvements in the city trying to bring it in, and we still have the dogs running around, and it's not really changed. I'm here asking the city to consider giving twenty-five thousand dollars to the Critter Shack and Cassie's Place-sponsored spay-neuter voucher program. I've sent all city council persons, the mayor, the city manager, the assistant city manager, the information on our program that includes every aspect of the pricing, what the vouchers include, how easy it is for us to separate the San Angelo citizens versus non-citizens to ensure that the city tax dollars are not being spent on non-citizens. If the city would go in thirds, the cost to the city would be an average of nineteen, under nineteen dollars per animal to get them spayed or neutered and vaccinated. I have also sent a study comparing the price to have animals spayed and neutered to the expenses that the shelter incurs for every animal. Please tell me how the shelter can pick up an animal, house them, feed them, vaccinate them, spay-neuter them, promote them to be adopted, then possibly euthanize and dispose of them, all for under less than nineteen dollars. We just, we have to wake up to this problem. It's not going away. Please don't tell me that you hear less about our pet over population or that you think it's improved. I've heard that comment before, and I don't know if people are calling and y'all aren't getting y'all's messages, or if they're just so tired of calling because nothing's getting done that they've given up. Last month, in May, we chose not to sell vouchers because we have to donate money to match that, to the vets. The vets get a fair price. And we are out of funds. San Angelo gives us, will help us, but we have to have funds also if we need new equipment for our spay-neuter clinic. We can't do all of it to that. And we had a sign up with everybody's phone numbers except for yours, I think, was wrong, Mr. Thompson. We had your, somebody else's down duplicated on yours. But all the people that we've talked to told us that they haven't had any kind of response to their calls that they've called in. Nobody, and when I sent this information last month, I had one response saying that they'd received it, and the other one, and one telling me that it went to spam. So I sent another text asking for people to check their spam, but I have a copy of that here today.
Thank you very much for being here today.
Do y'all want these?
Hand them to the city attorney or the city clerk. Further public comment?
Jamal Shumpert, single member District Two. I came up here to discuss what we discussed yesterday, but after hearing this woman talk, I just wanted to let you guys know I made some comments at the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee that you might need to look at. Probably would require you guys tapping into some community fund, project funds to accomplish, but I believe that that might be necessary because there are dogs all over my neighborhood. People don't even own these dogs. They're sitting on their porches as if that's their home. But I believe people are dumping dogs in my neighborhood. That's, this is not the reason why I came to talk to you today, but she brought up a great point for me. I can't have talked to you guys today because what you suggested last week, I kind of thought was out of line and a little inappropriate, given that there'd be no need to change the zone just so you could subvert the five-hundred-foot distance. So I brought with you a living wage calculator, which kind of...
Jamal, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Are you speaking on the STR ordinance?
No, I'm actually speaking on the Neighborhood Revitalization Program.
All right, just want to be clear. All right, thank you.
So looking at the factors, because it started from that conversation. I was looking at this living wage calculator made by Massachusetts Institute of Technology. It's also supported by National Education Association. Some of these things, some of these statistics on here, we're blowing some of our competitors out the water, like Avaline, Tyler, Longview, great job. But when it comes to living here, why is it more expensive if you have a kid to live here, if we're a family-friendly town? So if we dive into these living wage calculators, it will explain to us that maybe we've given out too much tax money to corporations that don't give back the money to the people working there so that they can afford the homes in that area. So it's always a circular thing of money going around. That's how economics work. I made a comment at the Economic Development Corporation, talking about that, how we gave our money to Ladok Alberta Canada. Nothing wrong with spurring incentives, but I think just a second round of getting some half some sales tax money. So if we really tamp down and look at statistics, we can really make a difference in a lot of places like the water department, the water and sewer department, animal shelter, economic development. It's quite, quite a few places we can make a difference in. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? One last request for any public comment? All right, we will close the public comment section of the agenda, and we will move on into the consent agenda. At this point, I am going to pull item G. It will not be discussed today. So item G, if you're here to speak about item G, it will not be discussed today. So I will ask, Larry, do you have any item you'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
Ma'am, I'd like to abstain from item E, and I'll be on mute because they're running a ship drill here.
Okay, so item E will be pulled. Karen?
Aye.
Item I? Lucy?
Nothing from you.
Harry? Tom? Tommy? All right, with that, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item E and I, having pulled G? May I have that motion?
So moved.
So moved by Harry, seconded by Karen. Public comment on the consent agenda with the exception of G, E, and I?
Ma'am, this is...
Just, yes, yes, Larry?
I was not pulling the item, I was simply abstaining from the vote.
On item E?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so item E is considered a part of this consent agenda vote?
And G just goes to the regular agenda is what I think they're asking.
Oh, you want it to the regular agenda?
Correct.
You didn't discuss with me.
Sorry. For that clarification, it goes to the regular agenda.
Okay. Then what we are doing is asking to vote on the consent agenda on all items except G and I. Public comment, I'll ask for again. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of all items on the consenta, please say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda passes. We will now move, and that is, I'm not sure it will be seven-zero vote, but Larry excluded himself from E, so I don't know how we record that, but item E would be a six-zero vote, and the rest would be a seven-zero vote.
Sounds like a Heather problem.
Yeah. Counting heads there. Okay, item I, second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter Twelve, Planning and Development, Exhibit A, zoning ordinance, Article Four, specific use standards, Section four oh six, bed and breakfast establishments and short-term rentals regarding approval, renewal, and revocation of conditional uses authorizing bed and breakfast and short-term rental establishments and wells as revising distance limitations with respect to short-term rentals. Karen, do you have a question or a comment?
Good morning. First, I'd like to commend everyone that worked so hard to accomplish the creation of an extraordinary STR ordinance for our city. It's historic, and it was quite wonderful. However, I have to report this morning that I've had several folks call, contact me, pardon me, contact me with concern regarding the protective zone around schools. And so their request was that we continue to discuss that and reconsider the amendment to that particular sub-item and expand it to one thousand feet rather than five hundred feet.
So not opposed to the five hundred as a, but want it further restricted to one thousand?
Correct, only around schools.
Further comment or comments from council? Yes, Tom?
I mean, we talked about that specifically at the meeting, and we, we almost talked about five hundred was almost too far because of commercial development that would be close to a school, and it's hard to regulate that because somebody can put in a school, you know, a church can put in a school, things like that. It was, it was kind of a moving target. We recognize five hundred. I mean, tell me a little bit more, Karen. I mean, I don't want to say no, but I want to say we discussed five hundred, and we were all good with it. And I think a thousand, boy, when you start drawing a thousand-foot circle around stuff, Karen, we're, we're getting out quite a ways.
I would say the following. We haven't even gone into effect yet. How about trying the five hundred feet? See if there's any issues or complications with it. See if there's any violations that would be concerning within the thousand feet, and then relook at it. But this hasn't even gone into effect. So we did discuss it. We had conversation about it and decided the five hundred feet would seem to be the correct number. Is it? Is it not? I don't know. It's not in effect. Let's get it in effect, and let's see what happens.
Back to Karen, I mean, did some people provide you some background? I mean, some info on why they wanted it to go out?
I was provided information that indicates there's precedent for that. And again, I'm just representing community opinion. It's not necessarily my own. I like the mayor's solution that we give it a try and see if, if there's pushback to the extent that we do, that we do indeed need to reconsider. Of course, where children are concerned, there's always a risk that we take a chance that, that there's an incident that's disturbing, and we don't want to have regrets after the fact, obviously. But my obligation today was to bring before you the concerns of several community members that brought that to my attention.
We have also received emails from the Airbnb Association who want us to have no restrictions. So there's people on both sides of the fence here. Again, I say let's get it in effect, let's see what happens, let's see if there's any issues. I think as we discussed and voted on last time, it's a good policy. I'd like to see us put it into action and go from there. Any other comments, questions for Erin concerning item I? All right, then may I have a motion for approval of item I?
So moved.
So moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Lucy. Public comment? Seeing none? Whoop, we got one.
Jamal Shumpert, single member District Number Two. For Ms. Hesse Smith, just so we're clear, the Tom Green County do, does parole and probation, and they set a thousand-foot distance from schools for their parolees and probationers. So, I mean, it kind of could help in that respect.
But if that's already in effect?
Well, it, it's not really ineffective. We're not there enforcing it, and we don't hardly enforce much on short-term rentals anyway. So if we go ahead and put it out there, this is going to be one more thing we're not enforcing, and one more thing we're going to have to look up. I don't think we should be so careless with our children. They are our future. Thank you.
Further public comment? Seeing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Larry? Aye? Okay, so that passes seven-zero. Right, we will now move into our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. I am going to ask that item G be first, since it was pulled from consent agenda. So item G is a resolution of the City of San Angelo City Council amending the schedule of fees and charges related to parks and recreation fees for the addition of BASK fees and removal of nature center fees. Tina, you are on.
I don't know if that's on. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. Carl has met with his board since this was put onto the agenda, and they requested a couple of minor changes to what was presented in your background. So he wanted to come forward and ask you to approve this item with those changes.
Please present.
Yes, our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board discussed this late Wednesday afternoon. They had a few adjustments, three on food items and one on activity. If, if this is passed, the resolution allows the city manager or his or her designated to approve adjustments in fees, but the adjustments they had on the food items was ring pops going from a dollar fifty to one dollar, prepackaged popcorn from a larger bag of five dollars to a smaller bag of three dollars, and adding a, a new food item on the list of Cheetos and hot cheese.
Serve it up.
There is one activity that they wanted to consider adjusting, the miniature golf. We're basically going with the same rate that was charged by San Angelo Host down there, and lowering the, the get-in-free age of under five years old, but they wanted to add a group rate. So instead of charging five dollars a person, no matter how many people showed up, if you have a group of six or more that are above the age of five, then it would be three dollars a person. So those are the adjustments that the board wanted council to consider.
Tell us the history on, on, on that. How many people? Is it popular? Is it not popular? Are we talking about something that doesn't matter one way or the other because it's not being used? Talk to me.
Well, the BASK, yes.
I know.
It was run by San Angelo Host, our city concessionaire. At the last amendment that we, the city council approved, that, that property was taken out of their services, their exclusive right to provide services for. And so now the city's picking up that responsibility to run the BASK under recreation. And so we wanted to continue the same services, pretty much charge the same things. Some of the activities are going to be a little bit lower than what the local market's charging, and we base that off of what San Angelo Host was charging at the BASK, as well as some of the boat rentals at Water Dogs, which is at Lake Nazworthy. The BASK is popular, it depends on when, if the school is in there or out, depends on what the weather, if it's hot or not. We do intend to have some more activities down there to bring in some more folks, some more events, to get it, get it more popular again.
We need to be, it doesn't seem to be utilized a lot. It's the reason I ask about participation. What I do know is there's a lot of fishing going on, and when you drive by there, fishing is the number-one activity, and lots of people are enjoying it for the purposes of fishing, which is great. So I just want to make sure that we're looking at, as we talk about fees, that we understand use. Is it being used? Is there an activity that people want down there? Do we need to rethink, and you can't, we're not going to vote on that today or whatever, but I think we need to be looking at, is this popular? Is miniature golf popular?
I think what this little offer is, once recreation takes it over, which we have never run it before, it's always been contracted out, it gives them the opportunity to look at those options, what might be trendy, might be happening, and how they use that. So I think they'll be watching that now that we're, we're over it.
Yeah, we need to make use of that incredible facility. So we need to be alert to what is or isn't working.
I agree.
And we're glad you're running it. Thank you. Okay, any questions from council? Tommy, please. It's the hot Cheetos that I'm interested in.
Oh, I thought you're...
I called on you to see...
No, I'm messing with Tom. Do we have any idea the reason that the vendor gave up, I guess, the opportunity to run this and gave it back to us? Did we request it back? Do we know if, if, was it a huge-money loser for them?
Yeah, I don't think they were making, they weren't making a profit off of it, I believe.
They were having a hard time staffing it, Tommy, so having someone there to operate it was a big challenge, so...
To, to a bigger fee discussion that we've had... So then to, to a bigger fee discussion that we've had before, which is not, I'm not intending to open that discussion today at all. But let's just watch that to see how we do in terms of profit loss, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay.
And whether there's other activities that would bring more to the table. So it's our opportunity to look at what the public wants and needs out of that area and to reevaluate what we offer. So, okay, good. All right, then is there a motion for approval of what was item G on the consent agenda, which is item C on the regular agenda now?
So moved.
So moved by Harry?
I'll second, ma'am.
Second by Tommy, public comment. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven, zero. Thank you, Carl. All right, we'll move into item A of the regular agenda, which is consider accepting the city's fiscal year 2023 annual comprehensive financial report and single audit. The presentation is going to be made by Armstrong, Bacchus, and Company, LLC partner, Gaila Thornton. I know she's in the audience.
Good morning, Mayor, council.
Good morning.
On behalf of Armstrong, Bacchus, and Company, thank you for engaging us one more year for the audit of the City of San Angelo. And thank you to the finance staff for helping us get this audit done. The purpose of an audit, so when we go in and audit the city, we don't look at everything. We are very risk-based. We look at items that are material, riskier to the public and the city. And we perform tests to determine whether your financial statements as a whole are reasonably stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And then as a result, we issue opinions on all the opinion units of your financial statements. And those opinions that we issued were what we call unmodified, which is a clean opinion. So it was a good audit this year. The reporting ended.
Is that opposed to other years when it's not a good, a good audit?
No, ma'am.
No, just asking.
No, ma'am, it's been good. You have a very large packet, which is your financial statements. And in that, we break it down into the primary government and then your, your CO-2 DC is presented as a discreetly presented component unit. All of that's included. And the basic financial statements, the major funds, because they're material, presented are the general fund and the intergovernmental fund, the water fund and the sewer fund. All the other funds are combined into what we call aggregate other. And so they're not presented separately in the first part of the report, but they're presented individually in combining statements at the back. So you can see all the details of all the funds in there somewhere. But the focus is on those four major material funds, general, intergovernmental, water, sewer. And as I mentioned, we issued a clean opinion. Some significant events that happened in 2023 that had a financial impact to your financial statements. We had a new accounting standard issued and effective for fiscal year 23. And that was GASB 96, which focuses on subscription-based information technology agreements. So your cloud-based agreements that you have to pay for month to month, those are now reported as assets and liabilities on your financial statements, which is different from yours past. Last year, we had to put leases on there. This year, we put what we call sebidas on there.
So is that why there's a $1.7 million increase in information technology?
Yes, ma'am. You also had $82 million in infrastructure and construction and process. Positive movement for the city. You have continued your Hickory expansion project with new debt and added construction and process. And then you had a significant increase in your pension liabilities. And those are all actuarially determined. And that increase is due to change in assumptions on the actuary liability and the interest rate. It makes it go up or down. As a whole, the entire government, not including CO-2 DC, you had total assets of 815 million, total liabilities of 509 million. Your total net position or your equity is 329 million as of September 30th, 2023. Your increase to your net position was $24 million. So a very positive year for the City of San Angelo. And that just shows how it's trended over the last five years. And your total net position just continues to increase.
And why is that?
Adding assets and then not spending as much as you budget.
That's the key.
That's the key. In addition to this report, we also issue what's called a single audit. This is required when you spend $750,000 or more in federal awards. You had $13.2 million in federal awards spent during 2023. So we go in and we test the internal control and compliance over those expenditures and we issue a separate report on that. This is how your grants or your federal expenditures have trended over the last five years. It's back up in 2023 mainly due to COVID funds that came in this year and that were awarded in prior years spent this year. So very positive for the City of San Angelo. Any questions?
I have a lot. Sorry, on the whole book. All right. All right. Starting with page 18. So on page 18, I think it gives us a great recap of really what happened in this year. And it's important to note that the interest rates gave us one of the greatest increases in terms of additional money. So the interest rate produced 12%, 12% increase, where sales tax was only 8.5% increase. So our growth came in interest payments, high interest rates, which had changed from low interest rates. So that's important to note. What's also important to note is that if you take a look on page 19 and you look at where the increase in expenses happened, where we had an $11 million increase in revenues, we had a 26 million increase in expenses. So we want to make sure our revenues increased greater than our expenses. And this would indicate that in 2023 versus 2022, that would not be the case. So expenses increased greater than revenue. We need to watch that. Total revenues of 78.8 million increased 6.1 million from 2022. What was interesting was the lower bill consumption revenues of $1.7 million less on water and sewer point five. So we collected 2.2 million less in water and sewer than the previous year. The question would be, is that because of the drought? It's just a question.
Question.
Okay, so that is concerning. What also was concerning was the lower charges for services of public safety of $1 million for a change in recording uncollectible revenue. What is that? That's on page 20.
Oh, on 20.
And that is item, well, the first thing under program revenue is 4.9 million lower, primarily due to, quote, $1.0 million for a change in recording uncollectible revenue.
Uncollectible revenue? I'm going to have to get back to you on that, I don't remember that one.
Okay. And as I said, interest income was one of our greatest asset increases. So with that, then my concern on page 74 is that I don't see the Lake Nazworthy Sewer Project listed. And that was a major investment.
We have to defer to Tina on that one. Looking at it.
The one that cost us $44 million?
The sewer project?
Yeah. It's not on there, I assure you.
I'll have to get back to you on that, Mayor. You're right, that should probably be on that list, so.
It must be, it was a big investment. Okay, so on page 89, the original budget for charges for services says it was 6.7 million. The final number was 9.4 million. That's a big jump from budget. Where would most of those increases come from?
Those were budget amendments that you all made throughout the year to get from original to final. The specific reason, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so we need to better understand where those charges for that almost $3 million increase in charges for services came from. How did that, how'd that break down? Then on page 14, let's see, I think it must be 141. I was very concerned about the principal property taxpayers and Sunset Mall, which was on there and from 2013 to 2014 and was omitted from this real estate list as well as Sam's East Project. Why would they be omitted? Because those two assessed values in the 2314 were $34 million and they're not even listed on here. So the mortifier Hirschfield's not on here, but I guess that's AFCO Steel. So that became that. Verizon was $20 million in 2314. There's nothing listed for that on here. So it seemed to me that the assessed values are missing some key properties.
So these specific statistics, they say unaudited at the top. These are prepared by city staff. And they, they have specific databases that they go in and get this information, but I don't have that information.
Those are just not, they're still listed because they were there 10 years ago, but they fell out of the top 10 and we only list the top 10 in the current year.
Yes, sir.
So we're asking a lot of questions here that, should they be directed more at staff than at Armstrong and Bacchus? I'm not trying to defend it, but I'm like, we give her a set of data and they look at it. But there's questions here that I think were questions that should be directed at staff.
And that's probably true.
And I think Dela is going to have a clue on some of these things, what we're asking her.
She might not, but this is the first time we've been given this booklet to review. So, and it's being presented today, which would have an impact on what she presents. So we just, we're not, we just need to understand where some of these issues.
I, I get where you're, I'm, we all got it last week before these meetings. But I was just in defense of, okay, I mean, we were asking some questions that, I mean, how many pages we got through and we've only had it a few days yet. So I think those were staff questions.
But if we don't do it now, when do we do it?
I think we can do that at any time, but I get it. Go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, so again, I think staff, Gaila can answer this one, but on page 151, there's some issues, I think, as it relates to full-time equivalent employees by department. Specifically, great engineering is up dramatically from the 2314, which we know is important. Nursing, immunization, as well as nutrition, both up.
Could you speak in, make sure you're speaking in the mic?
Oh, I can't read and speak. I gotta look and speak. Anyway, just looking at whether these are current and correct. Because I think we keep saying we can't hire engineers, but yet we've got 17 employed compared to eight in 23, 2014. And we know we need them. But I wasn't aware we had 17 employees. Now, that could be not just engineers, but other employees within that thing. But that's a positive thing to read and know we've got that much talent in our engineering department. So I'm just going through, looking at where our employees are. And then in the operating indicators, there's several things on page 115 worth interest, being interested in. I was surprised to find the number of acres maintained by our Parks Department has decreased from 695 acres to 590. I was surprised to see 2314, we had 449 events at the convention center and the 2223, only 160. Dramatic decrease. And then, most importantly, I'm not sure where the page is. I'll go back and find it. Oh, it's page 149. And this is what was shocking to me. Okay, in 2022, it shows that our population is 99,112. 2020 was the census year and it's at 100,006. In 2013, it says we had 97,492. In 2015, it said we had 100,415. So it would indicate we're losing population from 2015 down to 2022. And I don't think any of us feel like we're losing population. Again, this is information provided to you. I'm just looking at it going, these numbers don't seem to be correct. I don't think we have fewer people in 2022 living here than we did in 2013 and 2014.
Well, that was the information reported by the US Census Bureau. How correct that information is, we don't know.
I know, you're only given it. But I think these are issues that, because this is a document that many people look at and use. So our census, when we got the information in 2020, we were very surprised that we had less than 100,000 based off of the numbers provided us, right? But this says we have 100,000. And yet it says in 2022, we have fewer. Where'd they go? We think they're growing because we think we've built a lot more houses and they're full of people. So I'm just interested. That was just one night's review, so my apologies. I didn't get through the whole thing.
Well, no, Brenda, you bring up a good point. There's, there's things, we have questions here and we probably need to set up a time to staff to talk about them.
I know, I'm just highlighting. I'm not, but it obviously, they only have as good of information as they get.
As we provide.
So some of this is from, as she said, the federal government, some's from Tom Green County, some's from whatever. But this is the official document. It needs to be right. It needs to be reflected. But if it's not right, let's figure out how to make sure next year is correct or a little closer to it. Because I don't think anybody wants to see that we've lost population. It's not the trend line. Even if, we just, I'm just saying, thank you for your time and effort and a lot of information that you have to go through. This is only as good as what you get and our information's only as good as what we get.
Correct.
But we need to understand that some of these numbers, and I'm telling you, there's probably more issues in here than I've brought up. They're not your issues, but they're internal in terms of what we get and are provided and we need to challenge them. That's all I'm saying. Any other questions or comments from council? Then I think we want to move to approve the work that you've done.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A couple of seconds on that. Any public comment? We'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, seven, zero. Item B is considered a request for an appeal to Planning Commission's approval of conditional use CU24-03 for short-term rental located at 2246 Joy Road.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name's Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. Today I bring forth to you, as you just read, Mayor, it's an appeal, a citizen appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to allow a conditional use at the property there on Joy Road at, I believe it's 22, I'm going to read it here off of this because I can't see it there.
2246.
2246 Joy Road. So it is a conditional use that was voted on in, I believe it was March, at the March Planning Commission. And then it comes forward today as the appeal. It's in District One, Councilman Tommy Hebert in the Nazworthy neighborhood. And it is RS1 zoning district. And that is a, a picture of the property there with the dark garage door and you can see the lake behind it. This is just an overhead view. This doesn't have any of the for or against on it as of this moment. But I wanted y'all just to get a sense of Joy Road. It is kind of a, almost a block length. I want to say there's around 30 to 40 homes, give or take, in that area. I didn't do an exact count. You notice there are actually two homes that are on the water. So it's a very unique area in So it's a very unique area in one sense. Here, within the 200 feet, we did mail out 11 required notices. We did get eight back in opposition, this time for the appeal. As this slide shows, at the time we made the slide, there was 35 oppositions from outside the 200 feet. We did have a list of names given to us from the complaining parties in the area that all live out in the Nazworthy area. And I believe those numbers, and I have that number right here, is 56 total that were against, that were on here. Again, we had 11 within that area of the, of the eight out of the 11 in the mail-out area was in opposition. So there is significant citizen opposition to this. You see Joy Road there. They are long lots. Most of the homes, as you see, are towards the waterfront. Most of the homes have docks. And so Lake Nazworthy is a very desirable place for short-term rentals, but it's also a very desirable place for homeowners to own property on the water. And that is, as we all know, that is a, a major draw for our community, and we understand that. So here's just a larger view, just so you get a sense of where this is on Lake Nazworthy. You see Knickerbocker to the south, you see Fisherman's Road that kind of goes off and goes around back to Spring Creek Marina, and you're just south of the bridge that goes up there north of Mary E. Lee Park. Here's a map of the neighborhoods. You can see we are right down in this area, right here. We do have scattered short-term rentals around the lake. Currently, we have six that have gone through the full process. We have two that are actually working on their certificate of occupancies under the old rules, and then there's been three that have been denied or expired.
Would you go back to that again? I just.
Yes, ma'am. But they are pretty distributed around the lake at this time. I think as more and more tourism comes about, as properties may change hands, there are chances that there are more short-term rentals. As you know, with the action you took earlier today, each of those do have a 500-foot buffer around them that is not going to be appealable. And so that makes a big impact of trying to constant, limit the concentration of short-term rentals in any one given area. So again, on March 18th, the Planning Commission voted to approve with a request of approval of five to one. Conditional uses are usually approved through the Planning Commission. They do not rise to the city council level. In most of our cases that go to Planning Commission, either the applicant can appeal or a citizen can appeal. In this case, a citizen did appeal that is in the area, they're within the 200 feet. We did, staff does recommend approval still at this time, that they maintained their off, their two off-street parking premises. They obtained their certificate of occupancy, and they obtained and complied with the annual and fire inspection. Now, obviously, those are the conditions as of right now. The ordinance that you adopted today does not take effect until June 1, and so they would still be under these rules as their application came in under the old rules. We did mail out notices for the appeal. We did ensure that those notices both went to the neighbors, as well as the operator and the owner, and let them know that they are not able to operate the short-term rental until they get a conditional use approval. Right now, since it's under appeal, it is not fully approved, and so they should not be operating as such. We have had a couple of calls out there. I've got one that we have from the police department, that was for a noise call. It was on 4/20 of 2024. Came in, neighbor next door is an Airbnb, and they're playing music really loud, and it's, the statement was, it was them being loud and children running around, and that was at 5:30 in the afternoon on April 20. PD did respond, and they said there was no report required at the time. There are also three cases that our code enforcement officers have worked. They did one on March the 11th, a report of a home being rented for the weekend. They went out, checked the, the home, was not able to find any violations at that time. They also had a complaint on April the 12th of unsightly matter. There was garbage and trash around. They did go out and were not able to find junk and debris, but they did, they noted that they said no violations observed. And the last one was also, I believe, on 4/23, a complaint of operator in an Airbnb. Code enforcement contacted Mr. Dylan Burns, the property owner, and spoke with him about anyone that is living or staying at the property, and Mr. Burns on that time did say that he was allowing friends and family to stay at the home at that time. I myself went out just this weekend, Friday before the storms, as well as Saturday twice, just to see if there was any other activity that could be noticed for the weekend. I did not notice anything. There was one vehicle there, but there was no, nothing else that I could notice at the time that would have warranted some kind of verifiable violation. And so with that, our recommendation from city staff is to move forward with the approval of the conditional use for this property at 2246 Joy Road. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions I can.
My question is the hot tax money.
Since we do not have any verified proof that they've actually rented it as a short-term rental, there has not been any hot tax money redeemed at this time. Last time we checked with finance was about two weeks ago, our staff team did. Our staff team has done a great job, not just planners, but code enforcement, PD. As you can see, they've really worked on making sure, checking on this one to see if everything is going the way it should. Our recommendation is based on every year with our new ordinance, these folks are looked at. Staff is going to be looking at them every quarter to see if they're paying their hot taxes. Do they have any complaints? Is there any reason to bring forth a revocation of that conditional use? And so I think we do, will have more oversight. Again, it is a, the challenge we have, as you all know, with this one or any short-term rental, is verifiable proof. But we have to have proof that a violation has happened to, to make some kind of change.
Tommy, do you want to?
I've got a question, Mayor.
Yeah, please.
Aaron, I haven't heard the mention, I've heard you mention Mr. Burns named the owner of the property. Is he, does he reside within Tom Green County?
He does not. I believe he lives in Lubbock area. He does have a local operator that lives in Tom Green County, just on the south side of town.
So has anyone had conversations with the operator? Do you know?
We, city staff has had conversations with the operator, as, as well as Mr. Burns, but we have not, to my knowledge, I'm not sure if any of the, the residents have actually called, the residents that live around saying, hey, I have this issue, we need to, to discuss it. They did not mention that, but I'm not sure if that's taking place or not.
And silly question, but as far as you know, we have a good contact number for the operator, and that, that's the number at which the individual was, was contacted, the one that they gave. So they're reachable.
That is correct.
The operator is reachable.
They answered the times that the city called.
Okay. And are they aware, has, has our staff had any conversation with them to make them aware of things that, you know, that they're going to have to live by, assuming that they, approval is granted, they go through the full process, get the CO, et cetera? Is the operator aware of all those things before they begin renting as officially as a short-term?
Yes, they are. The city staff that runs, that works the case talks with not only the property owner, but the local operator of what the next steps are and what's required. We also document that with email, that we have sent that to both of those individuals. And in this case, since there was an appeal, we also give the phone call and a documented email saying you should not operate until you get your conditional use.
Okay, all right. Mayor, right now, that's all the questions I have.
I think Harry had a question.
I think this is more of a comment, but I will, I will say it anyway. Joy Road must be something special, because we've had this conversation with properties on there for the last six months or so. I hope we can get a resolution, one way or the other, on this. But I guess the only question I have is, is this particular road is evidently short enough that if we give this conditional use for STR today for this property, no one else in that neighborhood is going to be able to get one. Is that correct?
That's correct. That red oval there represents a 500-foot barrier around that property, so they would have it until that conditional use is revoked, or they choose to release their conditional use, and another short-term rental may be able to come in at that time.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Karen?
I have two questions. The first one is whether or not your staff has investigated whether this particular property may be currently advertised on any popular STR sites.
We have seen it advertised, but that, again, all because you advertise, it doesn't mean someone has used it and selected a short-term rental and paid for a short, short-term rental. That, that's our limitations of verified proof, and at this time, we have not seen any, usually those entities collect a state hot tax, and so we were able to go through and look to see if there's been any state hot tax collected, and we have not been able to verify that there has been.
I asked that question specifically because of the mayor's question regarding hot tax, and that combined with citizen reports that they've seen people renting it. So it begs the question, are they renting it, are they advertising it and renting it and not reporting it? I'll just leave that there. And then my second question has to do with the 43 objections against the approval of this certificate of occupancy. Can you familiarize us with the nature of those objections, please?
I would say the, the vast majority of them, and those particularly on Joy Road, this is a neighborhood to them. This is a, maybe for many of them, a retirement investment for them to retire on Lake Nazworthy in West Texas, and they want to preserve that neighborhood feel. And I would say that probably is echoed through many of the properties that have said this is not the place for a short-term rental. I do know that there are some of the folks here in the audience today, so I'll let them better explain their reasoning, but I would say the majority is they, they feel like this is a neighborhood area, they want it to stay a neighborhood area. I know they have fears that this is going to be rented out and be what we've all heard throughout the short-term rental process as a party house, and I think that's a second further discussion, maybe in the budget process or beginning of next year, of how do we police these, these short-term rentals? How do we go and do enforcement at some time in the future to ensure that the neighborhoods are truly being protected?
Mayor?
Yes, Tommy.
Couple of things occurred to me. Teresa, I'm going to put you on the spot in a minute with respect to Zutari case. Do, do we in fact, well, no, let me go, let me go a different direction. Karen, to your, to your question about the hot tax being paid, I talked to our finance staff, I believe it was Friday, it was late last week, may, maybe it was, it wasn't yesterday, I believe it was Friday, asking them, because if it is rented, it is my, if it, if it is rented through one of the rental sites, that, when they make that, that payment, that payment then goes to the state, it doesn't come to us. So I ask our staff to, our finance staff, to scour our records with respect to had any tax been paid to the state that we could see and verify had been paid to the state as if it had been rented. They could find nothing. So, one thing. Now, Teresa.
Cash speaks sometimes.
Who knows? But there's no verifiable proof that it has been rented through one of the sites as a short-term rental. Just over the, since this has been a topic over the past several months, I have been educated to, I think, understand that there have been some court cases that directly affect us what we can, what we cannot do, and if I'm not mistaken, it's the Zutari case that the Court of Appeals out of Austin decided. Give us a high-level summary in how that affects what we can and cannot do as a city. I guess we can do it, but is it setting ourselves up for a lawsuit that we'll just not be able to defend ourselves?
Yeah, at the risk of providing you guys legal counsel on a public forum, I'm going to be very general in my language, but basically, the courts are siding on the side of STR owners generally across the state, not just in Austin, and it all falls back onto the property rights of those people and their right to lease property. The courts tend to look at what is the difference between renting something 30 days and 31 days, and they're not finding there's a lot of difference. And generally, we are allowed to enact regulations that address issues that cannot be addressed some other way. So if our noise ordinance is not effective in controlling noise complaints, that are real noise complaints, I mean, our PD went out and they didn't find one, and I think there's a misconception that people are entitled to silence, people can make noise at properties, but as an example, if our ordinance is not effective in controlling that, then we can enact other regulations that can help do that. But we're pretty restricted in the kinds of regulations on STRs that we can impose right now.
So Aaron, that would then cause me to pose a question to you. At this point, we have no verifiable information that they have done anything out of bounds, illegal with respect to short-term rental. Is, is that an accurate statement?
That's correct.
Okay, so then back to you, Teresa. That doesn't give us much grounds then. It doesn't seem to me to deny this, since the Planning Commission have already, has already vetted this in a thorough fashion, because I've watched that meeting several times. So we, we might be skating out on thin ice were we to, 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 to go a certain direction today.
Yeah, I would ask if you do want to deny the CU and approve the appeal, that you do it with some findings of facts, so we have a basis to argue that it was a justified denial.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a justifiable denial?
In my staff opinion, we have not found anything that would rise to the threshold that we would go back if we, under our new ordinance, that we would go back to Planning Commission for revocation.
Thank you. Any other comment from city council members? Then may I have a motion from someone?
Mayor, since this is my district, it frustrates me as a council person not to be able to represent your district like, like you would want to, but it doesn't seem to me that we have any justifiable grounds to deny the STR. So having said that, I'm going to make a motion to uphold the Planning Commission's approval and to deny the appeal of this approval. So then somebody's going to have to tell us how that, how that, if we're in favor of upholding the Planning Commission and denying the appeal, is that a vote in favor of that motion?
This is complicated language, isn't it?
Well, it is when you have an appeal, and so we're, my motion is to uphold the Planning Commission's decision and deny the appeal. If we're going to be in favor of allowing the Planning Commission's decision to stand, we would vote in favor of that motion, correct?
Yes. So what you're saying, in other words, in a simple form, if you vote yes, the STR would be approved?
Yes.
If you vote no, the STR is not approved. It's that simple, black and white.
I guess that's simpler.
I'm going to go with it.
Okay, there you go. All right, so the motion is there. Is there a second? A second by Lucy. Public comment, please. Please come forward.
I'm Jerry Lancaster. My wife and I own the home directly next door at 2250 Joy Road. I did not realize that we could make complaints before now regarding the existing rental. It is being rented as a short-term rental. It has been rented since March the 8th periodically, every week. It is rented as of today as a short-term rental.
When you say rental, can you verify that he's been receiving money in exchange for using that house? Or just the fact that people are there?
I can verify it from those, those people, some of the people, not all of them. There, there may be some that have been employees, that, I seriously doubt it. The, there's a, there's a family there right now, they arrived at 4:00 PM yesterday. There's a couple, there's a family there right now, they arrived at 4:00 PM yesterday. A lady drove up while I was outside. She was very friendly, and I have no doubt they will be enjoyable neighbors. Their last name is Omera, and they are from Arizona. She said they rented it through the Airbnb website for a week. They have a son in college here, although they are renting it illegally, they are innocent, and I would not want to see them ask to leave early. I've got 13 instances, beginning on March 8th, listed here as Exhibit A of the times it's been rented. Another couple was Lexing Garner and her husband from Alpine, and their grown kids from New Mexico. The Garners were good friends of ours, our friends, David and Jerry Cook, who previously lived in Alpine. They complained to Dylan by texting because the gas grills had dried food on both and no gas and very uncomfortable beds. They demanded a partial refund because they had purchased meat that they couldn't, could not use. Dylan has never responded, as far as I can tell, and they specifically said that they had rented it through the Airbnb website. They have had that house listed on the Airbnb website as Endless Summer is the name of the place, and it has been rented pretty much continuously since March the 8th.
How is it we're not finding this information?
I would have given it to you daily if I'd have known that was an option, I didn't know that. And I've, if you've got my Exhibit A, it's listed, and I have got audio and video proof of it on my security cameras. I have cameras in the back and the front showing when people are arriving and when they leave. And when the police were called the other day, that didn't happen at 5:30 in the morning, that happened after midnight, and that party did not break up until 3:30 in the morning. My video and audio is timestamped. I'd have to have someone help me make, break that out, because it's continuous video 24/7, and I'd love for y'all to see it, I just, I'm not sure how to break that out and make a copy for you, but we will do that if you want it.
I don't know how, so somebody else would have to help you.
But to say that this has not been used as a short-term rental is absolutely untrue. We have proof of it, we have video and audio proof of it. On the day that the party went on and on and on, that audio is extremely loud, and that property is 15 feet from my back door. So you're, my 97-year-old mother is living with us right now, and she sleeps right there within 15 feet of that property. So it's going to restrict us from being able to use our own lake home that we've owned for 10 years, if this is granted. And I have this whole thing that I can read to you, but y'all may have copies of it, and I've signed it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We are definitely opposed.
Other public comment?
Brenda?
Yes?
Teresa, aren't there penalties that we discussed the last time about operating without the conditional use?
Yeah, there are penalties that we can investigate if we find that they've been operating without the conditional use, we can certainly, that's a violation of zoning ordinance, it can be $2,000 a day, and we can certainly look at that. But on the other side, we've talked as staff about denying because somebody's using without a permit, but really, the only remedy for them is to come and get the appropriate conditional use permit. So the fact that they're here is remedying, at least going forward, any future violations, and should not be considered as a reason for denial. But we can, with that information, go back and see if there have been past violations.
I would request you do so, please.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
My name's Wes Gieseky, I'm legal counsel for Dylan Burns, and the actual owner of the property is Bylet Conde Nero LLC, just want to correct that. Another correction, Dylan Burns actually does live in Wall, he does not live in Lubbock, he's a local resident. I'm just here to represent Mr. Burns, he's out of the country right now. We agree with the Planning Commission, we agree with Mr. Vanoy's assessment, there have not been, there's been a couple of complaints, I guess, but nothing that we can hang our hat on to say he's definitely in violation of any ordinance. So I'm just here to ask that you approve the STR and deny the appeal. Thank you.
I have a question, has he been operating?
No. He has friends and family all over the state, all over the country, that come and stay there. If there was an operation, I'm not aware of it.
But then it wouldn't be on Airbnb?
I would assume so.
That's kind of a red flag.
If it is, I don't know that it is.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, sir?
Wes Gieseky.
Gieseky.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If, just on my behalf, there's been enough smoke around the proverbial fire here. If you don't mind, I'm going to say on behalf of the council, if any council member objects to this, they are certainly free to do so, but I'm disappointed in Mr. Burns. Mr. Lancaster said he has talked to these people that have stated they have rented it off of Airbnb. I have no way to verify that or not, but the fact that it may be out there, and this has created such a stir out there, I'm disappointed. I would hope you would communicate to Mr. Burns, I hope he is a more responsible and responsive owner of that property than what it appears he has been, and I say appears, than what he appears to have been to this point. If you would pass that on to him, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely, I will.
Thank you, sir.
And I will also submit my contact information, so if anyone needs to get ahold of me, I'm happy to help, I'm just here to-
Are you local, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you would give that to the city clerk and the city attorney?
I will.
Give it to both of them, that would be appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Gieseky.
I think my question, Teresa, would be the following, let's say the council approves this STR request, can there be a stipulation that says, but if we have found all these violations as presented today truly exist, are there penalties that can be put against or assigned to this property because of the lack of honesty or forthrightness in terms of information?
We would certainly go through the process of citation and moving that through our, the judicial process we have in municipal court. Beyond that, again, the remedy for failing to operate with the CU is to come in and get a CU, which is what they've done. So they're bringing their property into compliance by doing that today.
Which sounds really good, sounds nice. The question mark is, have they been operating? And obviously, there's enough comments about this property that says they have been operating because it wouldn't be on Airbnb if not, or if so. So I appreciate the coming forward and doing the right thing by getting them proper documents, but I also want to make sure people understand we don't like lack of honesty, that's all. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Further public comment?
Counsel Steve Hampton, District 6. In light of this new information that's come forth at this meeting, I think this vote should be tabled until the evidence that has been alluded to can be proven and confirmed at a later time.
Tommy, are you willing to table or ask that this be tabled?
I'm not sure, Mayor, because from what the city attorney has said, we can go through the process of assessing fines, penalties, citations, et cetera, so I'm not sure that gains us anything because of where we find ourselves. Is that accurate, Teresa?
I would say so, unless you're willing to deny based on the fact that they've been operating prior, which I would not advise.
But tabling it doesn't say yes or no, it just says we want to find out the truth and then we'll take a vote. It doesn't mean we wouldn't vote in approval or denial of that.
It's a delay tactic if you'd like to do that, but, I mean, unless you know that that would make a difference in your vote, there's, I mean, it's just encouraging to continue to violate a law that he's trying to comply with.
Okay, further public comment?
Hello, I'm Ken Taylor, 2810 Red Bluff Road. I just would like to follow up on several things we've discussed at this point. I'm also a real estate investor, I have long-term rentals, short-term rentals, 30-day rentals. I understand the component and system of Airbnb and BRBO and those type of systems, and just because it's on the internet doesn't mean that rentals process through the internet. That is a way of finding renters, and if the only proof that we have that it has been rented is the actual receipt through Airbnb, we're chasing a ghost. I think, as Tommy pointed out, there's a lot of smoke here, and we have to act on a legal basis, but I think it's pretty clear to see what's been going on. As far as precedent goes, this property is very similar, I won't use the term identical, but very similar to the home, I believe it's three doors down, that we addressed six months ago, that Planning Commission denied, came to y'all for an appeal, and it was denied again. At the Planning Commission meeting, when we discussed our concerns and how this was a very similar property, I was shocked at the attitude that the residents received from Planning Commission. They used the term that we were acting as a vigilante group. They scolded Mr. Lancaster for bringing evidence. Mr. Lancaster is a retired court reporter, he understands what admissible and legal evidence is. We are doing our best to show y'all what's going on, we would like to see the same set of rules and stipulations followed, and I believe that this property is, again, very similar to what was denied. A moment ago, Planning Commission said that because of the application time of this particular property, it follows the old set of rules and not the new ones that are passed. The old set of rules did say that we had to have the 30-foot streets. I know that's been argued, I'm not trying to start a debate here about that, but that is a rule in effect, and we're avoiding rules that are in place. If I get a speeding ticket and go to Judge Daniel and tell him the speed limit's lowering next week, he's not going to take next week's speed limit into consideration, he's going to fine me based on what the rules are today. And this property does not meet all the rules that were in effect when it was applied for. The other thing that Planning Commission told us, and specifically to Mr. Lancaster, they warned him not to talk to those people, that could be dangerous. Is that what the city envisions for safe neighborhoods? Is that what we strive for, to have an area where we can't go in our backyard because who's over there might not be safe? The lake community as a whole is not trying to exclude people from coming out there. I feel it's the exact opposite. We have done a very good job of promoting the lake, we've worked with Parks and Wildlife and the city to help get the fishing pier built, we've invested our own monies into, may I wrap up?
Finish your question, finish your statement.
We've matched funds to help improve that fishing pier, we distribute the trash bags around the lake to help make a safer place.
Thank you very much.
So we're not trying to keep people out, but I do think there are very specific issues with this proposal that I would like to address.
Thank you very much, thank you. Further public comment? Okay, so with no further public comment, the motion that is on the floor is to, if you vote in support of giving this CO, you vote yes, if you're not in support of giving this CO, you vote no, is that correct?
Can I ask?
Yes, you may.
Teresa, going back to you, I think we've got two different topics here. One, do they meet the guidelines of approval as it is today with short-term rental? And then number two, have they been operating illegally?
Correct.
All right, so those, to me, there's a clear separation between the two. To prevent one, as Tommy has moved forward, is almost like our own penalty, I get that, but we hate for people to do that. So clarify me, we're talking about two different items here.
Right, we're going to move forward with investigating the information that was brought to us regarding past rentals, and we can still issue citations on that information if we are able to find enough information to move that forward. So we'll continue in that. Today is whether or not they're going to be licensed moving forward from the state forward.
So if we were to approve that and the license moved forward, can we come back and deny that on the basis that they have provided as they don't meet the guidelines? And have not, and have been operating illegally and not meeting the parameters of what we have today? And I realize that puts you in a gray spot.
Yeah, well, that's the question that we kicked around at staff, and, I mean, to punish somebody when, by following the remedy for their violation, just, I mean, it's up to you guys, you guys have the discretion to do that, I don't feel very good, but that's a real, puts us on really great ground, that you say, well, the reason we're denying you is because you haven't been operating with the CU when they're trying to get a CU. So we can still investigate past violations, and he can move forward with the proper authorization if you approve it today.
And the nearest point that we could deny, the reauthorization of a CU?
There is a point, and under the current process, I believe it could be at any point that that becomes, we get a number of complaints that are sustained and those sorts of things. I think that Planning has the ability to bring that back at any point in time under the rules as they're currently written. I'd also like to address, just to educate maybe y'all and the public, that every time we pass a code of ordinances, you guys, what you see and what we discuss are, like the things that are going to go in our written code, but there's an acting language that goes with that that is never discussed at this meeting because it's just the legalese that we need to make that effective. And one of the phrases that we use in all of our enacting ordinances is that if any portion of this ordinance is stricken down for any reason, the remaining part of the ordinance still is in effect, which is why when we say we can't enforce that provision, but we're going to enforce the entirety of the remaining portion of the ordinance, that's why we can do that, because we put that language whenever we're enacting an ordinance in the first place. So all of those things that the Austin case has struck down, like the street width, like the number of people gathering, those are no longer valid in our code of ordinances, even though they're still written there, based on that language that we put before.
Well, this is a complicated-
I know.
-conversation, and would seem to be one one would want to table and move down the road a bit, but I get it. So with that motion, and that second, and having had public comment, I think we're obligated to take a vote, and so we'll start with Tommy.
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Gary?
Nay.
Lucy?
Aye.
Karen?
Nay.
Brenda?
Aye.
Oh, Larry?
Aye.
So with that, I want to add just a comment, so it's four to two, but I want to make sure-
Sorry, Mayor, can we, we don't know what your vote was, we didn't-
I said aye.
Okay, thank you.
But what I want to make sure happens is the following, is that we go full force into investigating this, that every element that has been brought forward by various people is thoroughly investigated. We want to know the truth. We are basing this off of what we believe the legal standing of this person is, but we are all very upset about that go ahead and operate it and ask for forgiveness later concept, that's very irritating, and it basically says lack of respect, and that's what it is, is a lack of respect. So what I want to make sure happens, yes, it is approved, but I want everyone looking at every element of these accusations, and that there's a red flag on that property going forward for any potential violation. We're looking.
It screws the wall, $2,000 per day.
What was that?
It's Larry.
Larry, were you commenting on something? Because we heard you-
No, ma'am.
Okay, because we heard you say something about $2,000. Just want to know if we're winning that some way, or if it applies.
I was just chatting with my wife momentarily.
So I guess she needed $2,000 today.
Give her her nanny shopping money.
All right, are we, we've taken the vote, we have direction, and we have all eyes on this property, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I want to make one other comment before we move on to the closed session, if I could, and that is, I want to make sure Gayla Thornton understands that we believe strongly in her analysis from Armstrong back to some company and representing that company. My challenge is today to the report has nothing to do with what she has pres- My challenge is today to the report has nothing to do with what she has presented or the overall or their overall opinion. They do a great job. I have great faith in them, but I certainly have questions. And that is an important statement to make because I do have questions, several, and we need some information provided to us on those questions, okay? And that means internally, not externally. All right.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I do want to make sure, and those are great questions, Mayor. We do have an award-winning staff as far as the financials. They've done an outstanding job. And so our finance department works very closely with the auditor. So this information, I know Tina took it kind of hard there because they take great pride in how they do the reporting. So we'll definitely get those answers, Mayor. I mean, the questions that you had, very legitimate, but we'll get that information put together, get that...
I mean, we can't help it if the federal, the census people provide these numbers.
That's correct.
And that's what my point is.
Yes, ma'am.
But we got to point it out, because if we don't do it, and somebody's not looking, we're going to continually get bad numbers. We don't need somebody to think our community is decreasing in population.
I agree with that.
And that leads to other things. I mean, if you take a look at the property taxes and you look at what the property tax value of residential was in 2013, 2014, to what it is in '23, it's dramatically increased, dramatically. So how could we have less population? The numbers don't match up. And again, you're only as good as the information you're given. But we got to point it out and make sure we get good information. And it is not to make somebody not look like they're not doing their job, but it is the purpose of a City Council meeting to ask the questions.
Yes, ma'am, and we'll get that information to you as well. Thank you.
It's not to downplay the job done by staff at any level. Okay, with that, we will move on to the closed session of which there is, there is none, right? Okay, just reading what I have in front of me. Okay, so the item A is follow-up and administrative issues. Item B is consider approving various board nominations. The Planning Commission, Brittany Davis, my appointee, to a second term ending January 2026. The Public Housing Authority, Becky Fraser and Monette Mulliner, to a fourth term, and Troy Swilcock to a sixth, all ending April 2026. May I have a motion or any comments concerning those nominations?
May to approve.
There's a motion to approve?
Second.
A second by Harry. Any public comment on those? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Larry. And with that, may I have a motion for...
Mayor?
Yes?
Excuse me. Since the publication of the agenda, we, of course, had an election on Saturday for Chief of Police, so we do need to schedule a time to canvas those votes. That's recommended to be next Wednesday, the 15th of May. The results of the election is going to be a runoff. There was not a 50% plus one winner. So normally, we would need two council members to canvas the vote, but because we immediately need to call a runoff election, I will need four minimum for a quorum to meet at 8:30 on Wednesday, May 15th, so that we can canvas the results and call for a runoff.
I'll be there, Hillary.
Okay, so Karen wants to, Tommy, Lucy, and Harry, you always do this. Harry?
I'm looking at my calendar and making sure right now.
Looks like he's too busy.
Good.
Actually, will not be here. I'll be out of town.
Okay, all right, so Larry, either you volunteer or Tom, or I will have to. And Tom's going to be out of town. Larry, are you in town? If not, Mayor Gunner will...
I won't back then either.
Okay, so I guess it's going to be Karen, Lucy, Brenda, and Tommy. Those four people will be here to canvas it. But, you know, the other thing I want to say about the election office is, you know, there's been so many comments and so many issues over the past couple of years about the efficiency and voting and the honesty and all that goes with it. When they recounted the votes in this last election, and it was only off by, I mean, and there was a one-person vote, the difference between the county commissioner race, and when they audited it, I guess you say canvas or audit, it still came out exactly the same. And I think that should give the public great confidence in knowing that our election office is running a good election system. Those recounts said it all, and I just want to give them credit for what a great job they're doing over there. So with that, thank you. Okay.
I move adjourned, Mayor.
And that is a vote of seven to zero, I think. Okay, thank you.